Mayang hapon.
Mayang hapon.
The second regular session for the year 2025 is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Delphin B. Miones, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial Him and City Him.
In the name of the Father, the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear God, first of all, we would like to express our thanks to you for your goodness and love. We thank you for the blessings the past year 2024. You are so good to us. We do believe this year 2025, more blessings to us. Thank you for everything. Today, we are about to start our session. We ask your holy guidance, your presence be with us today. This is our wholehearted prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Bayang matili, perlas na sila tanan, alap ng uso sa tipid mo'y buhay. Lupang hirang, dunad na ng matiting sa mandulupin. Di ka pasisigil sa hahatag bundok, sa simay at sa langit mong buhaw. May ginagantula at kawin sa paglayang inamahal. Ang isnat ng patawag, burit ang umpay na ratinin. Ang miduwing na taram niya, kailan pa may di matitining. Lupa ng araw na walhatin pagsita, buhay langit sa feeling mo. Amin ligaya na pag, may nanggaapi ang mamatay ng dahil sayo. O probinsya na inamahal, sangsubangan ng labaw. Manwa kau na madayaw, ya naguyun niyang utaw. Malipayon kay baranggakaw ng Diyos. Matabayang kalupahan mo, yang tanuma bu ngaun. Dakat mo mga suba, madali kayang hisga, kabuhian ka wilihan ang kanan. Umahal na labaw oriental, langit mo mapawahi. Yangka butayan, yangka patagan, maya maday magandahai. Masbiha impa kamiko matto, kami mo uli anikan mo. Garbu nabi na labawenyo, yang akserbis ang kajawan mo. Kalangka, sugan ng nabi, nyaman mo di makati. Sangkat kayan, sangkat patagan, sangkat agan ang kaway kayuwan. Makadak yang, majeritay, kayang paliput na gandahan. Sangkat jawan, yang sangkukat, iya iya nyaribahan. Dagamat i, mati na parun, dagamat i, mati na gurun, yang dagamat i, mati na. Dagamat i, mati na tarun, dagamat i, mati na manun, dagamat i, mati na gurun. Sa Diyos labang, makadakahu, dagamat i, madayaw, dagamat i, mati.
Mr. Secretary, you may proceed with the roll call.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, Honorable Delphin Miones, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaita, Honorable Seida Princess Campos, Honorable Edmundo Pang Jr., on leave, Honorable Avilino Capinia Jr., Honorable Armand Valera, Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, Honorable Roelio Pabio, Honorable Baldilio Miones, Honorable Daniel Makaobos, Honorable Tomas Sibilyano, Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girbert.
Present. Coro, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the first regular session dated January 7, 2025, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections with our previous minutes? If there are none, Honorable Miones is then recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone.
Good afternoon.
Ah, good afternoon. Sorry. Mr. Chair, I believe each member has a copy of the minutes dated January 7, 2025 during the first regular session of the 7th City Council. If there is no proposed correction to the minutes, therefore, I move for the adoption of the said minutes. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the adoption of our previous minutes dated January 7, 2025. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, the previous minutes are hereby adopted. Please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
For question or no guests invited, privilege or other reports, observations?
Thank you. Privileges upon us. Are there any reports, observations, requests by the members? Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
Communication number 12, Series of 2025, Certified Urgent from the Local Chief Executive. I ask permission to my colleague that this communication to be discussed for favorable approval during an assigned business without suspending House rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pabio that Communication 12, Certified Urgent by our Local Chief Executive be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mayang hapon sa tanan. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Mr. Presiding Officer, this presentation would like to request that Committee Report Number 1-2025 and the corresponding resolution be included in our order of business, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Dayang Hirang that Committee Report Number 1, I'm sure all the members have a copy, be included in our order of business for today's session. If there are no objections, kindly take note.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Capinia.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Mayang hapon sa tanan.
Mayang hapon.
Mr. Chair, I have here two communications referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, Mr. Chair. First, Communication Number 17, Signified Urgent by our Local Chief Executive. Mr. Chair, I wish to have an approval from the members of this August body that this communication be tackled under unassigned business without suspending the House rules. And Communication Number 16, since not urgent in nature, but still, I need to have an approval from the members of this August body that this communication be tackled under unassigned business under suspended House rules, Mr. Chair, for discussions and possible approval.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Capinia that Communication 17, Certified Urgent, be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules, as well as Communication 16, not certified urgent, but requested to be tackled under unassigned business under suspended House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Valera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayang hapon sa tanan.
Mayang hapon.
Communication Number 14, Certified Urgent later from the Local Chief Executive. Mr. Chair, may I ask permission, approval from this August body that this communication will be discussed under unassigned business without the need of suspended of our House rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Valera that Communication Number 14 be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend House rules, Certified Urgent. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I believe we're done with all possible requests. Let's move on to the next item.
For proposed ordinance for first reading, none? No proposed resolution for first reading. For communications and messages, Communication Number 09, Series 2025, Letter from our Local Chief Executive, Honorable Michelle Rabat, addressed to the Honorable Members, Sanggoyang Panglungso, requesting to pass an ordinance adapting Executive Order Number 102, Series of 2023, regarding guidelines on allowable uses of municipal waters fronting the Hican Beach in Mayo Bay, particularly from Siço-Kadanlaan to Siço-Sandigan. Further request for the inclusion of penal provisions for the prohibited activities as enumerated in the Executive Order, referred to the Chairman of Committee on Tourism, the Honorable Samuel Rodriguez. Communication Number 10, Series 2025, this is for the information of the Honorable SP members pertaining to Executive Order Number 126, Series of 2024, amending various executive orders with subject matter, reorganizing and reconstituting the Mathi Investment Promotions Board by updating its membership. Communication Number 11, Series 2025, for the information of the Honorable SP members pertaining to Executive Order Number 128, Series of 2024, amending Executive Order Number 58, Series of 2023, subject matter creating the disaster risk reduction management in health, planning committee and the Health Emergency Response Team of the City of Mathi by updating the composition of the Health Emergency Response and Support Teams. Communication Number 12, Series 2025, an urgent letter from our Local Chief Executive, Honorable Michelle Rabat, addressed to the Honorable Sanggoyang Panglungso members, requesting for a passage of a resolution, authorizing Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, to sign for and behalf of the City Government of Mathi, the letter of agreement between the Philippine Business for Social Progress and the City Government of Mathi for the City Health Office to provide laboratory services to access TB project patients from various health centers of Dabo Oriental from January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2026, referred to the Committee on Health Chairman, the Honorable Roelio Pabio, as manifested by the Honorable Pabio. This will be discussed under unassigned business, without need of suspending House rules. Communication Number 13, Series 2025, a letter from our Local Chief Executive, addressed to the Honorable Sanggoyang Panglungso members, requesting for a passage of an ordinance of resolution naming the parcel of land which is currently used as road lot in Barangay Matiaw as Miguel G. Mitri Street, referred to the Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, Committee Chairman Housing and Land Utilization. Communication Number 14, Series 2025, an urgent letter from our Local Chief Executive, Honorable Michelle Rabat, addressed to the Honorable Sanggoyang Panglungso members, requesting for a passage of a resolution, authorizing the Honorable Michelle Rabat to sign for and behalf of the City Government of Mathi, the memorandum of agreement between the City of Mathi Credit Cooperative and the City Government of Mathi relative to its salary loan facility, referred to Chairman Committee on Cooperative Livelihood, the Honorable Armand Valera, as manifested by the Honorable Valera. This will be discussed under unassigned business without need of suspending the House rules. Communication Number 15, Series 2025, this pertains to Executive Order Number 127, Series of 2024, implementing rules and regulations of the City Ordinance Number 29, Series of 2008, as amended by City Ordinance Number 394, Series of 2020 known as Integrated Ecological Solid Waste Management of the City of Mathi, for the information of the Honorable SP members. Communication Number 16-2024, letter from our Local Chief Executive, requesting the Honorable SP members for a passage of an ordinance or resolution adapting the Department Finance, Local Finance Circular Number 001, Series 2019, guidelines on deposition and collection of local taxes, fees and charges on professionals, referred to the Honorable Capinia. And last communication, Mr. Chair, urgent letter from our Local Chief Executive, addressed to the Honorable Sanggoyang Panglungso members, requesting for a passage of a resolution, authorizing the extension of deadline for the processing of business permits, and authorizing the acting city treasurer to waive the penalties and surcharges of late renewal of business permits until January 31, 2025, referred to the Honorable Capinia, and this will be discussed under assigned business. That's all for communications, Mr. Chair. For counter business, non-peace business? For committee report, we have one. Committee Report Number 1 by the Honorable Dayang Hirang.
Thank you. Honorable Dayang Hirang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This presentation would like to render Committee Report Number 1, filed by the Committee on Environmental Protection. This is regarding the letter from the Local Chief Executive dated November 7, addressed to the Sanggoyang Panglungso members, requesting for the passage of a resolution, favorably endorsing the application for earthfield quarrying permit of Mr. Crescentilito Como located at Madang, Barangay Central, the city. I believe members were given copies of the said Committee Report. I now move for the adoption of Committee Report Number 1. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayang Hirang for the adoption of Committee Report Number 1, Series of 2025. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by most of the members, including Honorable Rodriguez. Are there any discussions? Any objections? If there are none, Committee Report Number 01 is hereby adopted. Please proceed to the next item, Mr. - ah, do you have any more requests? Please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
For discussion, second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer, proposed measure by the Honorable Dayang Hirang product of Committee Report Number 01, Series 2025.
Please, Honorable Dayang Hirang, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection, I now move for a passage of a resolution favorably endorsing the application for an earthfield quarrying permit of Mr. Crescentilito B. Como located at Madang, Barangay Central, City of Mathi. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There's a - wait, a few minutes, please, Mr. Chair. Please proceed, Honorable Dayang Hirang. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayang Hirang for a passage of a resolution regarding Committee - as a product of Committee Report Number 1, Series of 2025. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Are there any discussions? Any objections? If there are none, motion is carried. Please proceed, Honorable - ah, please proceed, SP Secretary.
No proposed ordinance for second reading. For unassigned business, we have two urgent communications, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. To further facilitate the three urgent communications, Honorable Miones is first recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. In order to address the urgent request of the mayor, I move for the conversion of this August body into a committee as a whole. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole, seconded by all the members. We are now converted into a committee as a whole, and Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Communication Number 12, Series of 2025, open for discussion.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 12 as presented by the Honorable Pabio. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption of Committee Number 12 as Committee Report as a whole recommendation. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Capinia is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the floor now is open for any discussions for Communication Number 17.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the said communication as presented by Honorable Capinia, Communication 17. If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the Committee as a whole recommendation as requested in Communication Number 17-2025. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinia for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communication Number 17. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Valera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor now is open for the discussion of Communication Number 14.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 14 as presented by Honorable Valera. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of Communication Number 14 as Committee as a whole recommendation. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Valera for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary. Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you. On behalf of the Committee on Health and Sanitation, I move for the passage, a resolution authorizing Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor, to enter into and sign for in behalf of the City Government of Mathi the letter of agreement between the Philippines Business for Social Progress to provide laboratory services to the access TB project patient from a various health center of Dabo Oriental from January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2026. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for a passage of a resolution that he has just stated. Can I see the hand? Members who second this motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Capinia is recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I now move for a resolution favorably granting the request of the Local Chief Executive, Honorable Michelle and Rabat, for the extension of the deadlines for processing of business permits and authorizing the acting city treasurer to waive the penalties and surcharges of late renewal of business permits until January 31, 2025. I believe every member has a copy of this proposed resolution. I now move for its approval, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinia for a passage of a resolution. Members who second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Valera is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor, the city to sign the memorandum of agreement entered into by and between the City Employees of Mathi Credit Cooperative and the City Government of Mathi. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Valera for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second this motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized. The facilitity, the one communication represented, requested by Honorable Capinia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the suspension of the House rules. I do so move.
Thank you. As well as the-
And also the conversion of this August body into a committee as a whole. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole, as well as the suspension of House rules. If this is seconded by all the members, then we are now converted into a committee as a whole and House rules are suspended. Honorable Capinia is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the floor now is open for any discussions for Communication Number 16-2025.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communication presented by Honorable Capinia. Are there any? Should there be none, please proceed, Honorable Capinia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we can see in the communication attached here with is the Local Finance Circular Number 001-2019, which will be adapted later for this resolution, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the Committee as a whole recommendation as requested in Communication Number 16-2025. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinia for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communication 16. Do any members second this motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera and Honorable Rodriguez and all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. We are now back into plenary. Honorable Capinia, you are recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I now move for a resolution adapting the Local Finance Circular Number 001-2019 of the Department of Finance, guidelines on the imposition and collection of local taxes, fees and charges on professionals. I now move for the passage of the resolution. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinia for a passage of resolution which he has just stated regarding the - what? Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. We are still under suspended House rules. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the lifting of the suspended House rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the lifting of suspended House rules. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, suspended House rules are now lifted. Please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
No proposed measure for third and final reading. Announcement, other matters?
Thank you. Are there any announcements or other matters by the members? Honorable Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to inform the whole composition of the Committee on Food, Agriculture, Fisheries and Aquatic Resources that we will be having a committee hearing tomorrow, January 15, 2025, 9:00 a.m. at the SP Session Hall relative to the proposed passage of City Ordinance Number 623, Series of 2025, and ordinance amending Section 25 of City Ordinance Number 406, Series of 2020. Members of this committee are Honorable Tara Marie Gaita, Vice Chairman, Honorable Campos Member, Honorable Makaobos Member, and Honorable Valera Member.
What time again, Honorable?
9:00 a.m., Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Rodriguez, for the update and reminder. Are there - are there any more announcements by the members? Honorable Capinia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder, pero 22 pa, no? Ang ito ang hearing for the administrative case filed within this Sangguniyan. Again, 22 reminders lang, para kompleto ang ito ang attendas.
Please be present on January 22, Wednesday. What?
2:00 p.m.
2:00 p.m. for our administrative case. Are there any announcements, Honorable Campos?
Mr. Chair, regarding the matters that was addressed to me last session, wala't na ka-komite hearing kay ang most members pod kay on leave. So we will be having the committee hearing for tomorrow, January 15, at 2:00 p.m. Since na ay committee hearing in the morning, this will be moved on the afternoon, so 2:00 p.m. siya.
Regarding what communication is that?
Regarding the ordinances of Barangay's Mr. Chair to be adopted and become a resolution.
Okay.
From Barangay Buso, I think.
Okay. Please submit the letter to my office so I can inform the other members. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any announcements or other matters by the members? If there are none, I just want to follow up the last year's referrals for communications. Please allow me to read. Please allow me to read communication 434, uh, Committee on Finance, communication 433, Committee on Good Governance, communication 423, Committee on Good Governance, communication 416, Committee on Transportation, communication 327, Committee on Transportation, communication 397, Committee on Energy and Water, communication 387, uh, Committee on Social Welfare and Community Development, communication 384, Committee on Environmental Protection. Okay. Communication 345, Committee on Health and Sanitation, communication 251, Committee on Health and Sanitation, communication 182. Ano, this acted already. Okay. That's it. Thank you. Please, please, uh, let's act on it. Kaya basi next month, busy na kahita. Ah, hindi na ma-kompleto sa session. Sige. Thank you. If there are no other announcements, please proceed to the next item.
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by the Honorable Delphine Miones.
Thank you. Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair. I move for the adjournment of the second regular session of the 7th City Council.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the adjournment of today's session. Seconded by all the members, session adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much once again for your goodness. We thank you for the success of our session for today. We thank you for the wisdom. We thank you for taking care of us. We thank you for everything. All the glory, praise is yours. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.